Giving it on to YouTube for public viewing. And with that, I ask that we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first agenda item, as is customary, is public input. We do have public this evening. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Ms. Piazza?
Hi, I'd like to do like a little report on our annual town cleanup which we had last Saturday. It was not quite as well attended, however, in going around the roads, I found people that hadn't checked in at the transfer station that just took it upon themselves to do certain areas in town. I want to give a big shout out once more to Tom Ferry, who's consistently been a key person and a hard worker in this. Once more in several areas. We did Tremont, I don't know.
I did, uh, what? You did Tremont.
But the amount of nip bottles is pretty bad.
Would've been nice to have a nickel for everyone.
Yes. And the amount of liquor bottles, it's scary to think of that the people are either drinking it and throwing it all along the.
Drinking and driving.
You betcha. You betcha. My sister was concerned on Brook Street because of, there seemed to be several areas where it looked like people were having parties in the evening in the woods, teenager kind of people. You know, which also to me, you have to look to the idea, what, where do they have to go at night? And what do they have to do in this town?
Well, there's no nightclub, so.
If it's, if it's the Brook Street area where the Somerset Water District property is, that's been a problem for years. We even had, we even had young people north from north of Boston come down when they got raided one time because they had built a big bonfire in the woods and that attracted the fire department and the police department. And Somerset Water has done, I don't know how many times they've blocked roads and put things up, but they managed to take them down.
So I want to thank everybody that participated the day of, and I also want to commend all of those that throughout the year also take specific sections of road and keep them clean, too. It's an ongoing battle and hopefully, maybe at some point, there can be some more education in the schools in regards to, or in the middle school, in the concern. We had children and one 75-year-old lady picking up, so.
Quite the spectrum.
And I thank the town for supporting this event.
Well, I would like to take this time, I certainly don't want to speak for anyone, but I think I can safely say that the town appreciates your efforts, all the volunteers. When I drove by, I did see families, young kids, the mom, the dad were out there, Nana, everybody was out there. So it's a very special thing. I also want to thank you personally. You do coordinate it year after year. Thank you so much. I know.
This is our third annual.
Crazy. And there will be a fourth, I'm sure.
Yes.
And also Tom Ferry, not just for his work, you know, picking up the bags after handing out the supplies, but also I know he coordinates pickups throughout the year. Because I've actually seen trash bags lining the road and then you'll go back, you know, a day later, they're not there anymore. So I know Mr. Ferry, Superintendent Ferry, has coordinated the pickup and it's constantly going on throughout the year, so.
We had newcomers to it this year and a lot of repeat people from other years. And I thank everybody in the town for supporting us.
Absolutely. You always have our support. Thank you, Vicky. Ms. Piazza, excuse me. All right. Any more public in part now? We just had more people come in. Mr. Reins?
I would defer.
No problem. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Good evening. I have three items on my report tonight. The first is a formation of a TIF review board. TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. Anything that, you know, sometimes new businesses come in and they have jobs that they want to put in, but some overhead costs might limit their ability to expand or do what they want to do, so they research the ability of getting a TIF. And currently, there are a couple of businesses seeking this out, and I think it wise to have a TIF review board with membership made up of maybe a member of Selectmen or myself or however you want to handle that, a member of the Finance Committee, the Principal Assessor, and maybe a member at large or the Treasurer, whatever you deem suitable. But I think it behooves us to look into that and set something up as we do have these economic development initiatives. We are part of the town area, economic target area, so we do qualify in most cases. And I just am here recommending that. If you would like more time, more information, I can, we can do that, but just wanted to get it out there.
Have you had a chance to check with Mrs. Boragard?
I had not been able to.
The TIF we had with the power plant?
Yeah, she was, I didn't know about the TIF with the power plant. Actually, the Finance Committee Chairman filled me in and he is in support of a TIF review board. He would nominate, or his committee would nominate somebody. I had tried to speak with Ms. Boragard three times today and either I was tied up or she was tied up, so I'm still working on it. Carol, I'll be there. But I, I have talked to her about this in the past and we have been in a meeting together with a proposed business who's mentioned it, and she didn't seem against it, although I don't know about her volunteering her time to serve on it or being on it.
So what I would say to this is, a fantastic idea. I would probably reserve a vote until we had that conversation with Ms. Boragard. Maybe she thinks someone else could fill in, I'm not sure. So that's what I would say about that. But again, fantastic idea. I think I would slightly, or not even modify, but add to what you said. I think with TIFs, you have a delicate balance between tax-paying residents and businesses. So what I would propose, and I don't know if you're amendable to this Selectmen Gulart, but I would actually propose having like a resident, a resident on the committee and then perhaps like a business owner, not necessarily a business owner who is seeking a TIF, but someone who understands business.
Representative of the business community.
Absolutely.
And as we're talking about this, I left out the Industrial Development Committee. That should be representative.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sorry, didn't mean, it's here in my notes, but that should be somebody as well.
I'm not sure how it was done when the power plant came in, but I do remember, excuse me, the Aquaria Plant asked for an agreement. They didn't get a TIF, but they wanted the designation, so it's possible also to give someone a certain economic designation without that agreement.
Yes.
The power plant went very well. They gave us $100,000 a year for 10 years. And it was only once that we didn't connect, collect a quarterly payment of $25,000 when they changed hands and somebody went bankrupt, but we got all the rest of the money.
Yeah. I, I think if the location is wise and suitable for the community, for whatever the business is, I think it's a great idea, especially where we're trying to build up our business community but not overwhelm the community at the same time, so.
So is your, I guess, initial proposal, the TIF review board would review the request for a TIF, I guess?
Right.
Perhaps with the business? And then they would make a recommendation, I'm just talking procedural now, they would make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and then this board would decide?
Absolutely.
If that's amendable for the, or good for the town?
That's exactly what I'm thinking, yes.
Okay. So do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, the only role, the only other role that's got to be a connection somehow, and I don't know if it's a board member or not, would be the town accountant because the DOR regs relative to these kinds of agreements. Now, and I'm not sure exactly what the role is, but I just mentioned that in passing.
So what?
If she, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we could explore, I can explore that. I basically wanted to know if you're in favor of it? We can explore it?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Get all the things worked out and then get started with this.
It was, the power plant was already here when I was on the board the first time, but I do remember Aquaria and I do remember having some conversations with them. Because it, that one stood out because they wanted the designation but not the TIF agreement. So I remember that happening.
So it sounds like what I'm hearing this evening is, this board, or at least the two Selectmen, we are in support of a TIF review board. It sounds like we have some other things to work out, but conceptually, philosophically as an idea, absolutely. The reason why I think it's a fantastic idea, and I really do appreciate you sharing this with us, is because I think having a TIF review board would show businesses who are contemplating locating in Dayton, we're serious, we have something in place, and we really want business to think about coming to Dayton and actually come to Dayton. So I think it's a good, it's good symbolically and it's also good procedurally as well. So we will definitely just have to speak to our assessor and perhaps the town accountant as well. My only concern with having the assessor and the town accountant, it's not even really a concern, is hours, like when would this board meet? That, that, I guess they would have to work out, but I would also be okay with if they couldn't serve, running everything by them before it comes to the board.
They could serve an advisory capacity, because that, the town accountant, obviously Jen would know the ins and outs of the DOR regs and Carol would know the, if you will, the ins and outs of the DOR regs as they relate to these kinds of programs. So even if they don't serve, they could be like ad hoc or advisory members or non-voting members.
Exactly, exactly. Or even just kept aware and then consulted.
Advisory, in some capacity.
Exactly.
But what I will say is, and I, I hope you'll agree with this Selectmen Gulart, I would, if they're not on the review board, I would absolutely, before I ever made a decision, I would absolutely want to know what they thought, whether they're on it or not.
Sure.
Okay.
I agree, yeah, yeah, we have consensus.
And Mr. Thibodeau just walked in. I just want to let you know that we were just talking about forming a TIF review board. Okay? All right. Thought you'd like to know that.
He seems excited.
All right. Well, it's one step closer and probably not the annual meeting, as our warrant closed tonight, or closes tonight.
And they would need some time to get going. They also have to get familiar with the program as well, Mike. Mr. Thibodeau, excuse me.
I have been, I have reached out to Maria.
She's nice.
She, well, she's lovely and we've been playing a little bit of a tag, but I've received her documentation. I'm reviewing it, so I'm working on it and we're going to try to start this review board. Yeah.
I understand.
Yep.
I understand. I understand government is frustrating, we understand this. What I would tell you as a business owner, Mr. Thibodeau, is, A, thank you for staying in Dayton. Another thing I would tell you is, I would hope that you would see this discussion this evening as a sign that we're serious about bringing business and we value business. Absolutely. I just wanted you to know that. Thank you, Mr. Thibodeau. Anything else? All right. Let's move on to the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program.
So this, I believe you may have already been presented information with. Bill Napolitano, who is our, one of our Serpent members and works very hard for our town, he emailed me about the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program and you have in your packet tonight some information about it, but essentially, we would don't, we would host, excuse me, this, this program. It's just a day-long kind of conference, I guess, not even, I don't want to call it a conference. It's just like a get-together and everyone comes in and I didn't, I, I don't know all the ins and outs of it because, to be honest, I, it seemed to me that you had already been made aware of it, but certainly Bill is excited about it and thinks it'd be a great idea for Dayton and we've done something similar. But it is involved in the watershed groups and the environmental groups. It is about climate change and impacts to our environment, what things are, what things are going on. So this is a way for these groups to get together and it seems right up our alley.
What I would say is, I definitely think, it's definitely something worth pursuing. My only issue, I guess, with it is more of a procedural issue. We do have the Emergency Preparedness Committee and the thing that I'm thinking is, and maybe, I want to hear what Selectmen Gulart, and you also have to say, Madam Administrator, but I'm actually thinking this might be, you're free to disagree, something that we should let the Board of Health or that committee decide if they think this is something and let them, if they want to do it, let them coordinate it all.
I think that's great to get that committee kind of up and rolling with energy.
I've attended the presentation on this right after the governor got this legislation passed. It was at the Wildlife Headquarters in Westboro and, and Mr. Ferry and I have talked about this quite a bit. I think a member, I think, actually, I think what we need is a committee to work on this with members from selected groups, because this isn't so much as emergency preparedness. This is things that can be done ahead of time to mitigate the climate warming, the seas rising, as we saw with the last storm, well, actually, it was a really high tide in Boston. They had water almost into the Back Bay. And so you don't need a storm tide or a really high full moon tide to cause flooding. And so the whole point in this is, the vault, and the vulnerability part of it is, they've already designated areas that would be prime targets or initial targets for this kind of damage from flooding, non-storm flooding and just with a normal sea rise. And so there are a number of programs that can be looked at. There is assistance. There are, there were three presenters at the meeting, as I remember. And so it's not truly emergency preparedness, but it's, I mean, obviously, the climate warming and the melting of the ice caps isn't going to happen tonight and tomorrow morning, we're all underwater. But the fact of the matter is, this, the governor passed this because, as you know, on the national level, there's a lot of doubt that this whole thing is a hoax and that nothing's really happening and this is just a cyclic thing. But the governor has taken a different approach because he feels based on the scientific data that there truly is something that needs to be done. And so that's why that legislation was passed. So I think it's something we absolutely have to look at. Mr. Ferry and I were really focusing on our waterfront, if you would. Obviously, we have other rivers that would be affected because they're tidal.
Bill has told, we have areas that are particularly vulnerable.
Yes.
And that's why he thinks we're such a great candidate to be involved in this because this gets our sites, these designated sites on, it's sort of like a reverse watch list, like a good watch list that gets us in a pipeline.
And.
So I, I think what I'm hearing that you're basically supportive, so I'm going to explore this further.
Right.
And we'll work with Phil and then if it's a committee thing, he thinks, or if he thinks he can work as his Serpent, or, you know, because he's in a lot of different capacities. He's part of the town river watershed and all of that, so.
There's definitely local work that can be done. There is money available to do some of this local work, but the whole point in the governor's program is, we're not going to wait for the ice cap to melt and the whatever. It's time to do something now.
Well, it's time to be proactive. I totally agree.
Exactly.
The other thing I think to, to what Selectmen Gulart was just saying, I didn't realize this initially, but I didn't realize there are grants available through this program. So whether we need to form a committee or whether we task an existing committee, whatever we do, I do think we should at least look into this further.
Sure.
And definitely see what we can do in terms of either signing up for the planning and designation program through them or doing one of the action grants. So yeah, absolutely.
I'll continue.
Good, good work on that.
Absolutely.
But just to, just to quote from the first sentence, "The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program, MVP, provides support for cities and towns in Massachusetts. To plan for resiliency and implement key climate change adaptation actions for resiliency, the state awards communities with funding to complete vulnerability assessments and develop action-oriented resiliency plans." So this is, we had the presentation talking about the grants, but then we had a couple of people that have actually already been involved in programs and what they've done in their areas to, to already start to respond to this before, start to plan for it before it's here.
Before it's an emergency.
Exactly, exactly.
And it can be regional, so it indicated that Berkeley has some vulnerable areas, so even, it could be potentially a joint committee between the two towns.
That would be cool.
And I think a lot of people are aware of this, that when you join with another municipality, your chance of getting a grant is even stronger, so that's helpful, too. So we'll look, I'll look into that, great. Okay. The next thing is warrant articles for annual town meeting. The warrant has closed today. We received a variety of warrant articles. Your list is in the packet. And I'm just going to stick with annual town meeting warrant articles for right now. And we did receive one that's not on this list at about 6:15 this afternoon, so I love Dayton. We really just get it right up to the deadline. And so that one is about $57,000 for cable equipment to continue the upgrades and replacement of 30,000, 30, 30-year-old equipment. And if you remember, when we explored for that IT grant through the Community Compact, the Cable Group did provide some items totaling 25, so I think that they've built upon this. So it's $57,000 about, he has to go out to bid, of course, for cable equipment, and the funding source for this would be from that Cable.
The PEG?
The PEG access count, yes. So that's just an important distinction as we continue. So that's one that's not on your list.
It's special. You'll need this right here, under the annual.
Got you.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. So I don't know if you want to just, if we want to just run through these? Would you like me just to?
Yes, yeah, please.
Okay. The first here, the historian put in the gift of the Nathaniel Crane House. That article would be contingent upon funding available to move the house, which is the next article. That was sent in by petition. Stonewall Protection Bylaw, also from the historian, also from, actually, I'm sorry, all three of these were done by petition. These are the top three. The Stretch Energy Code Bylaw, the Marijuana Overlay District Bylaw, the CPC group of articles, so the administrative CPC, expenses in CPC projects, de-letting of the segregated school, purchase of the Arujow land and, which would be an agricultural preservation restriction on the land, and install overhead electrical service, which I do believe is also for the segregated school. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But two, those are two separate articles. The Board of Health has submitted a bylaw change to Article 27, Section 2, which is the criminal charge, not criminal, the non-criminal disposition article, excuse me. They've also submitted a leash law. If the leash law passes, they're seeking this salary increase to the animal control officer and the amount of $2,600 due to the expected additional work that that would incur. The one that I've thrown in here for the Board of Selectmen came to my attention just Monday. It is the house adjacent to Town Hall here. It did go up for auction, there were no bidders, and it is very nicely situated to the town. If you were interested in exploring this further, that's why I put it on here, so that we could get into the deadline. I see a lot of value personally in purchasing that property. It could be a new library site, it could be site for senior housing, it could be expansion for parking lots, so we could make this building ADA compliant and maybe provide a renovation onto it. It could be a site for a new fire station, I mean, really, just anything that we might potentially need. But it did only come to my attention on Monday. It's not fully vetted, but I didn't, I didn't want to miss the opportunity without talking to you, so that's why it's here.
Do we know where the number came from?
Zillow, I think. Where did we come, where did we find that? I think that was.
What they were asking for.
That was the asking price.
If it had gone to auction, was that the minimum?
I, I think it was two, yes, I believe so. And they, they received no, no bids on that.
Question.
Yes.
The 282,000, is that for just the house or is that house and how much land?
It would be everything.
Everything, everything.
Do you know how much, how much land it is?
Do you happen to know how much land it is?
Okay.
That seems like a low price for a big house, but we'll see how it shapes up. Thank you for including that.
I have no idea what the realtor rates, which is about the most significant of the four houses are.
But is it possible that even if that were, I feel like I'm getting too far ahead of myself, but if that two, if that figure were approved and they were asking for more, then...
So the money is not, I don't want to say the money's not important, the money's always important, but right now, that's not very concerning as far as our procedure for setting, you know, reviewing what these warrant articles are. But I have worked with the town accountant. I've made my recommendations of where I think all of this money should come from and you'll hear that later tonight, but it's all covered by free cash with the exception of two items. And I can get into that and the reasons for that.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Absolutely. But that includes, the 282 would be purchased, would be paid for through free cash means.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you would need to vote whether or not you want to support that one and, but that's for later. Okay.
Thank you.
Salaries for elected town officials, those are of course already included in your omnibus budget, but that's there as an article, because that's separate. A non-binding referendum to expand the Board of Selectmen to five members. Library is their revolving accounts to accept fines, their revolving accounts for copying and printing, that's done every year. And also, the next one is the primetime revolving fund. The North Dayton Playground, from the Parks and Rec, North Dayton Playground, paving for the basketball courts. A bylaw establishing a playground curfew and rules. The agriculture, well, it's our Agricultural Commission, which is a two-parter, so it's establishing the Agricultural Commission and approving the right-to-farm bylaw. A fully equipped police vehicle. Chapter 90 funding's on here, that's always there every year. Accepting the road for the boat ramp, leading up to the boat ramp. Purchasing two snow plows. This culvert grant is a, is a maybe and, to be honest, it doesn't need to be there at this point. The Minimum Maintenance Bylaw, that's for the use of ways, that's updating the general bylaws, Use of Ways Bylaw, Section 15. Amending the zoning bylaws for a medical overlay for 1901 County Street, that is also a petition. The annual audit for the accountant, that's something every year. And I just want to pause there and just say, I do recommend that that show up in the operating budget. It is something that comes up every year. It's something we have to do and it's, in my opinion, very appropriate to be a part of the accountant's budget, and she agrees, but just an FYI for the future. The 3% local sales tax for adult-use marijuana shops should they locate here in Dayton. An environmental study on a handful of parcels. Town Administrator Bylaw. A group of boards, committees, departments got together and they want to continue the document scanning started by the Building Inspector, and this is actually a pretty great service for the public and the departments to get everything scanned and organized by address. So that's continuing that and increasing the number of boards that are, basically every address will have a jacket and all the action by these various boards, Board of Health, Planning Board, zoning, and Building Inspector will all be together.
By address?
By address.
That's, yeah, that's.
Very important and very good and very efficient, so way to go. We're going to skip this other one and speaking with Tom Ferry, the paving for Town Hall, that is something we need to continue and we'll just defer that to the October Town Meeting, should we be ready for that. The pumper for the Fire Department, the final payment is due. The Fire Department's also requesting an ambulance and a Fire Chief's new vehicle, which currently is driving 2006, so he's looking to replace that. The schools, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Administrator, no, no, just one question about the Fire Chief vehicle. This might, might be something that, a discussion we continue at a later date, but did he mention what to do with the old one if this one passes?
I believe they were, he said it in his presentation. I think he was going to make it something else. I'll follow up.
But they're going, the, the department will retain it?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll double-check on that, but I believe so.
That's fine. Thank you.
The school department is looking for modular units for Dayton Elementary School. The Emergency Preparedness Committee has put in the sum of $5,000 for the purchase of folding cots and other related sheltering items.
I have one question and I don't mean to back us up.
No, it's, no.
Did, did these, Regional School District give us a figure for those modular units?
No, I believe the opening is May 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
And then, of course, the cable equipment, as I started with. So those are all of the annual town meeting warrant articles that were submitted. And my, in my mind, my plan is that you will vote on what goes on the warrant article, uh, excuse me, on the warrant next meeting, May 2nd. So this is just to give you to digest.
Thank you.
So Karen, thank you for all of your work, 'cause she did wonderful things for this.
Always.
And I can tell you now that everything, aside from the moving of the Nathaniel Crane House and the $2,600 for the animal control officer, I, we can play, we can pay for through free cash. The ambulance payment, it's a lease payment, that would, we would look to that, look for that to come out of the ambulance fund. And I think it is sound financial practice to, to use free cash to pay for these items. The modulators, of course, I don't have a recommendation on that. I don't know the cost. I'm sure it is high. And we're not, we don't know what we're gonna do with that yet. But everything else I've made a recommendation on, and of course, it can change when we do get that figure. Okay, and then, special town meeting.
Oh, one last thing.
I'm sorry, yes.
No, it's okay. Are you, how are you feeling, or are you optimistic that finance will also agree that these should be paid from free cash? Have you spoke to the chairman?
I have spoke with the chairman, and he does get this from, this is Jen's summary sheet, and she does do a great job of keeping him clued in. I am very optimistic. What does throw a wrench in things is the modular. So I think so. I also think, I really would like to see a full working capital outlay committee that meets regularly and can help make the decisions on these. Maybe let's kick this out till, you know, we have an asset inventory, and maybe let's put this project to next year, and we can plan ahead for it. And so everyone, we can sort of get a big picture and determine who's getting what and when. So, but I do believe he's, he's optimistic about those. Perhaps some funding sources he would see differently, but I think, I think we're good. And with all this, this leaves a handful of, like, $8,000 and some change that would cover what has been submitted so far for special town meeting. So we're in a great, we're in a great spot.
So what you're talking about is spending the free cash we have right now?
Yes, left over from what was not expended in October.
One comment. I hope for the ambulance, I don't question whether we need one or not, but I hope that the chief is going to look into that Volkswagen settlement because of what the, we found out about.
The medium.
Medium-sized or medium-weight, or medium-something ambulance is that a diesel engine. If you're gonna replace one, it's possible to get the money to pay for the thing, which is a huge amount. But even if we got partial reimbursement on a diesel ambulance, it's worth going after.
Absolutely. Okay.
Mr. Ferry doesn't have any vehicles here, but I think he's also looking, which is, doesn't relate to, to the warrant articles, but he's also looking to see if there are any diesel engines that need to be replaced, or if he's got an older truck that he thought he could get a few more years out of. If we can get money out of that Volkswagen settlement, then we could do that now.
Great.
Are we, are you gonna review the special town meeting as well?
So I am going to ask you if you wouldn't mind jumping to Item 6C, which is open the warrant for the special town meeting and set the closing date, and then go over it, what came in. So this was an oversight on my, I forgot to put special town meeting when we open the annual, so.
Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 6E, announce special election.
Oh.
No, you don't want to.
I'm sorry, 6C, as in Charlie.
Okay, excuse me. Forget that one, Karen. Mr. Chairman, I move that we take Agenda Item 6C, open warrant for special town meeting and set closing date.
I will, yep, I will step down and second that motion. Discussion?
I thought we already did this.
I believe we only opened the annual.
Annual.
So I, it's procedure, 'cause I love this town, they just sent in their specials anyway.
All right, so we are at discussion. Any more discussion? All right. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Okay, and the closing date I am suggesting is May 9th.
Opening when?
Right now.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we open the warrant for the special town meeting today, April 25th, and that the closing date be May?
9th.
May 9th.
Any particular time, Madam Administrator?
4 o'clock, close of business.
Sounds good to me. I will step down and second that motion. Discussion? Hearing none. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Motion passes.
Okay, great. So what has already been, just in anticipation of having a special, what has already been approved, or excuse me, submitted, I'm sorry, are additionally funded the special town elections expense at $3,500, and additionally fund the elections personnel account, which, of course, we won't know until that happens. There was an error, if you remember, a handful of months back. We talked about an error in the assessment for the, the capital assessment for Dayton Rehoboth, so that's actually 3,053, but again, the money doesn't matter at this point. And then prior year bills, there are a handful of bills. This last item that's listed here, the town accountant's confident that we could take care of this through transfers, so that would actually not be on the warrant.
Okay.
And so it's open. Please send us your special town meeting warrant articles if you have them, and the deadline for that is May 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
And that is all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we can hopefully begin to wrap up the remainder of the Selectmen's budget review. Old business.
So I do know that you met yesterday at the Finance Committee, so you did hear the Veteran Services agent and his presentation.
We did.
So you voted on that, I assume?
We, we didn't.
Okay.
I think, since it was a publicly posted meeting, I think individually, we both expressed support for Veteran Service Officer Hershey's request. Do you wanna have more discussion about it?
No, but the only thing we just said, that we, we both said that we would support it, but we're also waiting to find out what the Finance Committee's going to do, because they didn't vote on anything.
Right.
They're going to have a meeting and tell, tell us which articles, well, they're gonna get, make recommendations on all of them, so I think that was the, that was the one that we discussed, was Mr. Hershey's. That was the only department head, I think, that came in to discuss it.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that gave like a presentation.
We've gotta do other work, but we've gotta have a separate workshop meeting to get it done on, on another department, okay?
Oh, yes. And.
There was one other thing I wanted to, I guess, re-raise, because we did already sort of vote on this. It was the Building Inspector's Budget, and that is, excuse me, I just passed it. That is Page 8, Department 241. Specifically, I'm speaking about Line 5131, overtime slash additional hours. I believe when we voted, we had voted your recommendation, Madam Administrator, for $4,000.
Yes.
Given the presentation, short presentation that Building Commissioner Aguirre gave last night, I had expressed a willingness to actually accept the department request for $6,500, with the understanding that whatever was unused would go back into the general fund. And the rea, part of the reason I was supportive of it is because he had already cut his overtime from last year by more than half. So there was that. There was also Line 5380, demolition of deteriorated structures. The, I believe we, the Board of Selectmen voted to approve this department with your recommendation of $20,000, but based on his presentation last night, I had, again, expressed a willingness to honor his request of $30,000. And again, with his understanding that whatever, and this happens anyway, but whatever was unused would go back into the general fund. I think circumstances can be unpredictable. I don't know if there would be a fire on July 2nd, and now we don't, you know, we weren't prepared for that. So I'm okay with the $30,000. Is that something we would, we need to vote on again?
So you, yes, and so first, you need to vote to reconsider. Since you both voted in the prevailing way, you both, either of you can bring this up again for reconsideration. And then after you take that vote, any discussion that you may have, and then vote on the amendments if you so desire.
Selectmen, go on.
Well, my only concern is, we don't know where the Finance Committee's coming from in on these particular items, quite frankly. I'm more comfortable leaving them until we know exactly what they're gonna do, 'cause if they're gonna recommend what we talked about, then I expect we're gonna have some more discussion. The board will have more discussion, and then we'll, we'll resolve it that night. So I don't wanna have to vote tonight, and then if we have that discussion, go back and change it again. And it, we've only got.
There's only a couple things, I agree.
So we don't have, we don't have a lot of them that we would have to do this on. And, and if, if their recommendation is, is what the chairman just mentioned, then we're just gonna have a, in effect, confirmation vote, and we'll do it all at that time.
That's fine. Are you okay with that, Madam Administrator?
I'm totally fine with whatever you're.
I'm okay with that. Was there anything else we missed in our previous?
So we were gonna do DR's assessment, so, and I spoke with the Finance Committee Chairman, and they're coming into their meeting tomorrow night. And I just, I mean, I don't really know what we even can say, because if, if you alter it any way, it just goes to, to just be no. So I think it just behooves us to wait and to see what the Finance Committee hears at their presentation, which is the school committee's expected to attend, and both BP and DR are expected to attend tomorrow. So I think it's wise also to hear the BP presentation, as that went up about $100,000 from last year. So I don't really have any educated recommendation. That's the assessment that they're giving us, and I'm just going to defer to the Finance Committee. I would just recommend you do the same, but it's, of course, your decision.
And I'm okay with that, because I think that follows the same logic. We were just discussing of us not doing a vote tonight, and then we were, you know, the assessment was off, or whatever the case may be, and then now we have to do another one, and.
Quite frankly, with the school budget, even when we get through and the dust settles, we have to wait for the Rehoboth Town Meeting, because if it's a less amount, automatically ours goes down. So.
I think that's.
It's wise to wait.
Where we just got the budget, I've, I've skimmed through it a little bit, because other than looking at, well, I didn't, I only looked at numbers, I didn't know. I took, I photoed the pages I wanted to read, which will fit in a one-inch notebook. But I also think that when you, when you go through it, again, because we've still only got a gross budget, and you don't know state aid, and even if you guesstimated the same as last year, when you're all done, it's the Rehoboth Town Meeting that happens first, and that really determines.
What's going on.
How far Dayton's will drop.
And I will say, the good news is, the numbers we've been plugging in for our summary sheet is, are the, the department requests, so that would come at the tippity-top of everything. And we're over the levy by $1.4 million, which I know sounds like a lot, but is very easy to, not easy, I shouldn't say that, but very manageable to come down and decrease, and that puts us in really good shape. And this is especially so when you think about all of these articles that are able to be paid through free cash and not raised and appropriated.
Well, the biggest chunk of that, that million is the school district, so.
Exactly, which is further, furthers me as to why I just want to see what happens tomorrow.
Yeah.
But anyway, that, I believe, is that for us on the budget.
So we just need to have FinCon conclude their discussion, so we have an idea of our recommendations, and then there's like three or four things we'll need to revisit, and then we'll be done.
All right.
Is that okay, Selectmen, go on?
Yeah, I think, 'cause last night, we were pretty much, we had consensus on just about everything, and if by any chance something should change, whether it's the Veterans Agent or the Building Commissioner, if something changes that we're not aware of, I'm sure we're gonna have more discussion to find out.
Yes.
Why.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Okay, new business. And first on the agenda this evening is the award bid for the roof repair of Old Town Hall. And I just wanna verify, are we prepared to act on this this evening, Madam Administrator?
We are. I just need to grab the actual.
I have the.
You have, oh, perfect.
Email.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. So we had some roof damage based on, because of the nor'easter. We patched it. We went up to bid per Mass General Law. We actually sealed, it wasn't a sealed bid process because of the, the cost, but we had our bid opening today. We had three bidders. Two were responsive and provided, and responsible, providing all of the information that they needed. One did not. But the lowest bidder was Plan B Construction Company out of Barrington, Rhode Island. The scope of services listed the roof replacement as the main item that we were gonna take care of. And then an alternate for replacement of gutters on the main building only as an alternate if we, we did reserve the right on whether or not to award that. This is your prerogative, if you don't wanna award the gutters. However, it's, it's fine. There's, the cost came in, and we can afford to do both. So the roof replacement, lowest bidder, and the gutter alternate one, lowest bidder were the same, and it is Plan B Construction Company. The roof replacement came in at $15,750, and alternate number one for the gutter replacement for the main building was $1,600.
Do you mind if I have that back?
I, oh, I'm sorry, yes, you need that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. And I did speak with the Building Commissioner, who is out of the office today, but by phone. He has actually worked with this individual before and is confident in the work. He spoke with him and said that the work would be scheduled in about three weeks, but I think that's, that's okay. There are tarps down protecting. I know that the health agent did a check today to make sure everything was okay, and because of the takeoff of the rain this afternoon, Tom Ferry is supposed to check in the morning to make sure that it's all set. But about three weeks, we could begin construction.
And before, before I accept motions to act on this, I just wanna be sure, and the Building Commissioner is okay with the board potentially awarding this bid to the lowest bidder?
Yes.
That would be Mr. Aguirre's recommendation.
Mr. Aguirre's recommendation, and my recommendation is Plan B Construction Company as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the bid for the roof replacement at the Old Town Hall to Plan B Construction Company, 86 Blanding Road, Barrington, Rhode Island, with a roof replacement bid of $15,750, and I will include alternate number one, $1,600 for gutters, making the total cost $17,350.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion? Sure, Mr. Ryan.
Is that before or after insurance?
That is before insurance. The insurance is $9,300, some, some, with some, a little bit extra.
Yeah, it's right around $10,000. Jim said that last night, because we got a $5,000 deductible.
So we'd pay the difference?
Any further discussion? Anybody else?
Also, the check is in hand, so we, we have it.
I actually thought it was gonna be a lot higher than that.
Me, too.
For some reason.
Even the, the other bidders came in around the 20 and 22,000 mark. To me, that's very affordable.
Any more discussion?
Good work, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Okay, hearing no more discussion, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Good work, Mr. Commissioner. Next on the agenda this evening is new payment designation authorization form.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that you and I sign the new payment designation authorization form. That has been prepared.
I will step down and second that motion. I will step down and second that motion. Discussion?
Uh, just so that people know, whenever the committee changes, there has to be a designation form that is signed by the members that indicates that if the Chairman is not present, then either of the remaining Board members can sign. And since we only have one other Board member right now, uh, Mister, uh, in Mister Zagroff's, uh, absence, I can sign. And we will do this again after the election so that all three members will be listed. But it's a formality, but it's something we have to do.
We, thank you, Selectman Goulart. We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. We already did Agenda Item C, so we are-
Signing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting excited. Selectman Goulart? Just a moment.
Okay. And we'll have Karen fill in the rest of it. Okay?
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Brady. So now, we have to set the time, uh, for both the special and the annual town meeting.
The Town Clerk has requested or recommended that special town meeting be at six P.M. and annual town meeting be at seven P.M.
That's typically when it is, so nothing, uh, out of the ordinary there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the, uh, special town meeting on June the fourth, that's the day we're working with, June fourth, be scheduled to convene at six P.M. And that the annual town meeting on June fourth be scheduled to convene at seven P.M.
I will step down and second that motion. Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and the motion passes. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the announcement of the special town election. Uh, it, uh, so for those who are unaware, the special town election to fill, um, the vacated Board of Selectmen's seat, um, with an expiring term of 2020, uh, is set for June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. I believe it's at the Dighton Elementary School from seven A.M. to seven P.M., uh, Eastern Standard Time to accommodate, um, folks who may, uh, have to work. It is a Thursday. Okay, so that's Thursday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, from seven A.M. to seven P.M. at the Dighton Elementary School. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we set the date for the special election for Thursday, June the twenty-eighth, from seven A.M. to seven P.M. at the Dighton Elementary School.
We already voted on this Monday.
On Monday. You voted to, uh, call it and instruct her to take care of it, so.
Okay. Um, I withdraw the motion, um, but, so, so actually, this is just a, this is just a public announcement because we did vote on Monday.
It should've been, we should've done it under announcements. We'll move it there for next week.
Well, it's special, so.
We'll move it there next week, probably.
We don't do this very often.
Exactly. Yes, that's the truth. And, uh, so next, uh, we're gonna review the drawings for the Lions Club Bachi Court. Uh, we have been presented with the drawings before we discuss, I just wanted to ask, I know, um, the Lions Club member, um, Mr. Tony Rosario is present and I just wanted to ask, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no. He's taking, uh, new people clean.
Mm-hmm. I think you got a future in artistry here, Mr. Rosario. Or archi- architect, future architect.
Get him an engineering stamp.
So, uh, I actually don't really, I don't have, I apologize, I don't have many questions. I did review it and I think it's gonna be a fine bachi ball court and I hope to be out there with playing against you guys. Don't, don't play me too hard, though.
I will say-
Don't run the table on me.
I knew there was no doubt, but they, Mr. Rosario did come and we talked everything, um, over and they are good to go as far as the AG's office is concerned.
I'll hold this up. I don't know if, uh, the camera can zero in on this, but I will tell you this, it is twenty feet, the, the land area involved, the lawn area involved, north to south, is twenty feet wide. The length of the actual playing area is eighty feet, which is east to west. And then the actual width of the playing area is twelve feet. So the overall lawn area that this will occupy is, is twenty feet. And then, uh, you'll be able to, if this can be picked up by the camera, uh, the actual playing court is eighty feet long and twelve feet wide. And there's little benches along the side, so I will hold this up to see if a camera can pick this up. Oh, that's pretty good. So this is the, where's my hand? Okay. Oh, this is tricky, it's reversed.
A dental hygienist, too.
Right. All right, so this is the twenty feet, that line, that line on the top, and then see the square? That, that, or excuse me, that rectangle, that rectangle is twelve feet wide and going this direction, it's eighty feet long. So this is, this is the, uh, actual playing court. And then that whole area that is drawn in there, that's the lawn area around where the court will be. So that's pretty good.
And to where Selectman Goulart's left hand is, just in case nobody can read the writing, um, those are gonna be benches. Three benches.
That's the, that's the viewing area.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Cable, that's a great shot.
So as I recall, Madam Administrator or Selectman Goulart, uh, we approved tentatively the Bachi Court contingent upon the drawing. So do we need to revote or do we just accept the drawings and now the bachi ball court's accepted?
Your second, uh, accept the drawings.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the drawings that, the drawing that has been presented, given the dimensions of the Bachi Court that, uh, was tentatively, tentatively approved, uh, to be constructed by the Dighton Lions Club.
I will step down and second that motion. Uh, further discussion?
We just asked that, I mean, I know they will, but, um, keep the Building Inspector involved with whatever he might need and, you know.
He's, he's always gonna help and-
Good.
Appreciate it.
Wonderful. And I, I know that it'll go great, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
When do you anticipate starting this?
Uh, it's up to Tom, Tom, you know, uh-
Mr. Ferry?
Mr. Ferry.
Okay.
And when he, you know, gets a chance and, you know, you know, start, he's gonna like to start lining people up, you know, since it's gonna be a community thing, uh, volunteer work and, uh, and hopefully he's done, uh, this year, so we can play on it for the summer.
Hey, I like that idea, Mr. Rosario. There you go. Uh, thank you. And I hope, I hope you'll allow me to be out there at least once, please.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Uh, so we have a motion, uh, and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Uh, opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Good work and, and thank you again, Mr. Rosario.
Thank you.
And please thank the Lions for us.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under new business, appoint Serpide Commission Member and as I understand, Madam Administrator, that is going to be the Planning Board Chairman, uh, Mr. Peter Benby?
Yes. Um, as we heard last week, he, um, had indicated interest, um, so much so that he got the meeting schedule, verified that he could do it and, uh, filled out the appropriate paperwork. So this is just pending your approval of him being appointed as such.
What I would say is, since this is a planning, since Serpide is a planning commission, a district, um, I think it's absolutely fitting that the Planning Board Chairman, um, or at least a Planning Board Member, but to have the actual Planning Board Chairman be a member, um, or Commissioner, I think is fantastic. I really don't have much, um, that I'd like to say, this is very good news. Selectman Goulart?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint Peter Ven- Ven- Benby to be our Serpide Commission Member.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes and Peter, uh, Mr. Peter Benby is our Serpide Commission Member. So congratulations and thank you so much, uh, Mr. Benby, for stepping up. We do appreciate it very, very much. And next on the agenda, we have correspondence. Ms. Brady, do we have any correspondence today?
We have this one.
Okay. Let's move on to announcements. Selectman Goulart?
Yes, I have a special announcement. Today is Administrative Assistance Day. This is a very important day because this is the day that we have the opportunity to recognize Mrs. Brady for her support, for her great sense of humor, for all that she does for us during the year, for her, her outstanding pleasant manner when she's dealing with the public, uh, whether they're happy, glad, or irate. Um, I don't think, uh, I don't think she gets enough recognition during the year and I really think that this is a special, this is a special day. And so on behalf of us and, uh, our previous selectmen who you also served, um, I want to thank you and say how much we appreciate everything you do for us and we appreciate your sense of humor, Karen.
Thank you.
What I would add is, thank you for keeping us organized and also for keeping us smiling very much. We do appreciate all that you do. I would also like to, uh, acknowledge our, uh, various clerks, uh, here at Town Hall, um, our office managers. Um, I know you don't have that title, Administrative Assistant, but, uh, we do appreciate all that you do, um, holding our boards and our committees, uh, keeping them organized and holding them together.
All of our support staff.
Absolutely. Would, could not run the town without you, um, and I mean that truly, um, objectively, that's just, that's just the facts. So thank you so much for many, many years of dedicated service and hopefully many more to come.
Now, other announcements. Bulky item pickups are scheduled for the week of June eleventh through June the fifteenth. Tags are available for purchase at the Selectmen's Office. This, the bulky item pickup at your home will be the day that your trash is picked up that week.
Selectman Goulart, before we move on, I just wanted to ask either Ms. Brady or Town Administrator Aaronstein, did the Board of Health mention when they were gonna release the rate sheet or are they just using the same rates from 2017?
We do have one, I believe it's listed on the Board of Health website.
Thank you.
Did the rates go up? Do we know or is it the same?
I think it's the same as last year. They went up a little bit last year, but they're the same.
Okay. If anyone has any questions about the rates for the bulky item pickup, for the individual pieces of, uh, uh, the individual items that will be picked up, uh, please give the Board of Health a call, uh, or you can go online and check it out on the website. Uh, the Dighton Historical Society has a few upcoming events. April twenty-eighth is the Spring Psychic Fair, ten A.M. to five P.M. Totten Yacht Club, twenty-one, twenty-five Water Street, here in town. To reserve space, call Patty at five zero eight, four three six, three one zero five. Also, May nineteenth, Plant and Yard Sale, Winslow Davis Museum, nine A.M. to two P.M. Call five zero eight, six six nine, four zero zero four to reserve a yard sale space. And also, I have a special poster here. The two thousand and eighteen Spring Expo at the Aggie School will take place Sunday, May the sixth, that's this coming Sunday, from ten A.M. to three P.M. The Bristol Aggie Grows Farmers Market and Vendor Expo, live animal exhibits, a gourmet food truck and more. The Bristol Aggie Floriculture and Landscape Design and Construction Departments will also be hosting a plant sale, just in time for Mother's Day. Event details, again, Sunday, May sixth, from ten A.M. to three P.M. Perspective Student Tour from nine to eleven A.M. in the gym. So if you're thinking about going to the Aggie School, get there by nine, uh, and certainly before eleven, and they'll give you a tour and probably tell you all about the expansion that's going to take place. Uh, the event's at the Bristol County Agricultural High School, one thirty-five Center Street in Dighton. The contact number is five zero eight, six six nine, six seven four four. This is really pretty. Uh, also, their website is W-W-W dot BristolAggie.org. So I'll just hold this up.
So it's not this coming Sunday, is it the following?
It's next Sunday.
What was, yeah, what was the date?
May sixth, I believe?
May sixth.
Oh, okay.
I'll be there. We had a good time last year.
Yes, yes, it is. This is, this is, this is a nice event. We'll hang this out in the foyer, too.
Uh, so Selectmen's Reports, and before we, uh, get into, um, them too much, I just wanted to mention that, um, it was totally unplanned, but Selectman Goulart and I were, um, fortunate enough to attend the rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday.
We got our vaccine.
Yeah. And, um, it was really nice and it was nice to see the Town Clerk there. It was nice to see folks coming in with their cats and their dogs and, um, getting them vaccinated. Um, so you may have more to say. I just wanted to thank the Dighton Rehoboth, uh, Veterinary Hospital, Dr. Bruzy, the fantastic vet, veterinary assistants who were there administering the shots, as well as our Town Clerk, uh, for doing the dog licensing, um, and our Animal Control Officer, and I believe Mr. Smuss from the, uh, Dighton Fire Department was also there as well. So it was very nice.
Mm-hmm. It was a, there was a, it was not crowded, uh, there was a, a stream, uh, not a line, but people were coming and going and everybody was stopping and talking and, uh, we were checking out all the pets.
Absolutely.
Uh, and it was, it was a very nice event. Uh, the other event I wanna mention is, I attended the Historical Society's presentation on J.K. Milliken and the Mount Hope Mill that was held at the Community Church. That was very well attended. And, um, the young lady who made the presentation, uh, completed her studies at Bridgewater State and she's going on to Iowa for her, um, graduate school, and she actually received the scholarship from the Historical Society. They presented the check to her. And, uh, the discussion was interesting because there were people at that event that either live in mill houses or had relatives who worked at the mill. And there actually was one gentleman, uh, who is a, uh, is related by marriage to the Milliken family. So that was nice.
Crazy.
Doctor Sir.
I think I've met him. I think I've met that individual.
Doctor Sir.
He's really nice.
I think so.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice gentleman. Furthering the Selectmen's Reports, kind of two announcements. Um, there will be an information session regarding the proposed right to farm bylaw and Agricultural Commission Warren Article that, uh, Madam Administrator had mentioned earlier. That will be held on Thursday, May seventeenth, six thirty P.M. at Town Hall. And of course, uh, the public is encouraged to attend and ask questions, that is the whole point, uh, of holding it. We will have, um, Serpide's Bill Napolitano, who is, um, extremely instrumental in having us, uh, in having the right to farm bylaw and, uh, Warren Articles come to fruition. He'll also be there, uh, to provide his expertise when responding, uh, to resident questions. There will be two upcoming Green Communities Information Sessions. Uh, they will be held, um, regarding the proposed stretch energy code bylaw. The first one will be held on Monday, May, uh, fourteenth at seven P.M. And the second one will be held Wednesday, May thirtieth, at seven thirty P.M. at Town Hall. Again, the whole point, um, is to have the public, um, attend and ask, uh, their burning questions, um, regarding the stretch energy code bylaw. Uh, so please, don't hesitate, um, we look forward to meeting everybody.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there was one other meeting that I attended, um, probably a month or so ago. We attended, uh, meetings, a meeting at Dighton Rehoboth Regional, and at that time, the topic was security in our schools, meaning the regional high school, Dighton Elementary and Dighton Middle. Obviously, we had concerns about Bristol Aggie because it's also located here in Dighton. And this week, we did meet with, uh, the architects for the new project, the Superintendent Director, Ms. Sands, and the Police and Fire Chief from Dighton were here. The review covered both security for the new construction that will take place and the new types of systems that are available. But we also discussed security for those students as the campus is currently laid out, and obviously, uh, those students move from building to building freely. Um, I can't go into any detail, obviously, because it was a, an executive session, and it did deal with security. But, uh, we got our questions answered. I think we all felt comfortable with what we were hearing, and there were a couple of areas that will be, will have to be resolved between the Fire Chief, uh, amongst, actually, amongst the Fire Chief, the Building Commissioner, and the architectural firm, and those relate to codes. So, again, it was a very good meeting, and, uh, I think our concerns, uh, were addressed as far as, obviously, the new buildings will be state of the art, but we felt comfortable with what they told us about, what's in place right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Selectman Goulart.
Welcome.
I appreciate that, I forgot about that meeting, it was two days ago. Thank you.
Solid blur.
Yes. Uh, next is acknowledgements. Um, in addition to acknowledging all of our fantastic administrative assistance, um, I did wanna acknowledge you, uh, Ms. Piazza, again, for Cleanup Day, you do it every year, um, and nobody does it as well as you or ever will, so, thank you very much, very much. So I'd like to acknowledge you, uh, and as well as Mr. Ferry, uh, for all that you do. Thank you. Next, approval of the minutes. Do we have? Oh, perfect. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Forty-three A dash eighteen in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents payroll. Warrant forty-three B dash eighteen in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents payroll. Uh, warrant number forty-three C eighteen in the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-three cents. And warrant forty-three D dash eighteen, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and sixty cents, the last two being accounts payable.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Discussion? Hearing none, uh, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Uh, this is the public input I like to refer to as Speak Now or Hold Your Peace Until Next Week. Uh, does anyone have anything they'd like to say before we adjourn? Sure, Mr. Ryan's. Oh, uh, excuse me, forgive my manners, Mr. Ryan's, while you're here, uh, I, I know that you were instrumental, um, in cleaning up the parks, as I understand, on Earth Day, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd just like to say that, um, the Fox Reparation Commission sponsored a fourteen-kane old kite day at the elementary school. There were a hundred and seven children who were present who participated, and you strike a, I just, you should see this band, you know, this show. This is, this is amazing, you know, it's all on, he's.
He's elderly, but it is, they just felt just so comfortable in at home working with him, but overall, I, I had a blast myself on flying a kite for the first time in fifty years, but, uh, it was, it was an exciting day, so, it was, it was a fun time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan's. Thank you very much. Any other public input this evening? All right, I'll entertain, uh, motions to, uh, enter into executive session at this time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, that relate to collective bargaining.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion passes. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're entering into executive session. Cable, thank you so much, we appreciate it, have a wonderful evening. Thank you, public, we appreciate you as well.
Good night, Cable.